Yeah, it's in the south end, it's kinda prequod.
There he is.
Center of town.
Yeah.
On the south side.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening all, welcome to Grabletown Council. Call the meeting for this evening to order. Unfortunately Jeff is not going to be here, so we cannot approve the minutes of the October twenty ninth meeting, since it was just Wilmer and Jeff, and so we're going from there. So we'll start out with DLZ.
All right, um, sent a update yesterday, everybody has a packet there. Mainly updates, pending items, and then there's one action I think council considered. The waterworks project. On the water plant vacation, we're just waiting for a pending invoice for material testing, that's for the services associated with the lagoon. And of course that can be within the project, so that shouldn't be a problem. Dan's still working with on the check out, we gotta add there's the tower. I think IDIM wanted that, right?
Yeah, and on the other one, they're supposed to be sending an invoice to.
The town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
The l- uh, lagoon?
Yeah, um. We've already finalized that with Fleming on that end of it, and it was in their contract to do.
Right.
Um, but going through their contract, that portion was, they never paid, that portion was never billed to us either, because they didn't, it wasn't done, so it's not, it was, we were never, will be billed twice for it, will be billed once, it's just not going through the contract. This is done directly to us. That makes sense, they say that, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Um, and then once we close those projects out, we will have some contingency money, uh, like I said, same amount, about two hundred fifty seven thousand. So we can, once we get to that point, we can talk about how that can be used.
Okay.
Uh, trail, again, we had the ribbon cutting, um. What was that, Monday?
Yeah, Monday.
Monday, yeah.
So Monday, so that project is officially done, so that will become off the list here soon, probably the next couple meetings. On the sewer extension project, uh, on sewer projects, uh, on the sewer extension, uh, out east of town. They are working on the temporary fencing, of course, coordination ongoing, Dan and Elijah are working with all the various property owners to get those taps where they need to be. There is a pay application here in front of council to consider, if you're, uh, sheet number four. That is actually pay application. Oh, actually, it's, uh, no, sheet number five. Sheet number five is pay application number three for API construction, puts them about thirty six percent complete. I think they actually got more work done than that, but with this, there's a payment due sixty thousand, three hundred dollars and forty one cents. So we would ask council to consider that for approval.
I made a motion that we go ahead and pay the a hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy five dollars and thirty one cents.
So approved.
Two copies here, one for the town, and one for me, just for a plot signature. Thank you. Uh, on the Pedro sewer extension, um, pressure testing, uh, that was completed. Uh, we're still holding on that, getting a price for that farther extension, farther extension south, but we'll be putting that together. The other thing as a reminder on that, once that project's done, we have a lot of eager, well, a handful of eager people that wanna connect. But in order to do that, we're gonna try to, we're gonna have to develop a packet to give them, uh, explain it to them what grinders, where they can get their grinder pumps. It's gotta be a certain one, explain to them what they're responsible for, what the town's responsible for, so that's something that will, Dan and I will be developing here in the near future. On the sewer lining project, uh, the sewer manhole line's completed, uh, there is a pay app here for the town to consider. It's actually that, or sheet number four. And that pay application is for a hundred and eighty five thousand, sixty five dollars and twenty six cents, and that's to In situ form technology, so we would recommend council consider that for approval, pay application number one.
She made a motion to go ahead and pay the a hundred and eighty five thousand, nine, a hundred and sixty five dollars and twenty six cents.
And the same, just a signature and two spots for claw. Then on the, um, last project, pump station, uh, Ryan and I were talking about, Pedro, at least the substantial part of that's complete in terms of the pumps and the running of the pump station. They will be moving to Main Street next.
Yep.
One of the things we were talking about, the wind order for them to bypass, there is gonna be some maintenance of traffic there while they're working on the pump station, because that manhole's in the road, so uh, no pay applications for that project.
So the Pedro is functioning?
Yeah, Pedro, Pedro is back up, both pumps, it's back to full functioning, the station. The, it took about five past today, tonight, and it's been running since probably, uh, Eric finished up about about five o'clock, so that's why we had it running and cycling through, and so it is back up to normal.
Should be in good shape.
Should be in good shape, yeah, we put both the older pumps down in there, because they were both running fine, so we got the new one, is in building, is in building two. So hopefully everything is going smooth over there, so.
Good to hear, good to hear.
And I just brought that in, that's what it is, been sprayed inside your guys' manholes, and this was going inside the lift stations, just so you, you know, it's basically just a it's basically just a hard firm coating that goes inside there, so. That was taken out of the lift station out there when we were out, so if anyone wants to see it, that's what's going in there.
Um, on the next community crossing projects, the twenty twenty three dash two, still need to do the final walkthrough and close that project out. Still holding retainage, uh, the next project, um, again, same there, um, you got split rail fence that needs to be approved, or installed. Yeah, it's totally built out, still holding retainage. Todd sent a pay application, but I cannot believe I don't have a hard copy of it, um, and you probably don't have it either, do you?
No.
Um.
Is it in that email, 'cause I could print it off?
I think he sent, I think he sent it separately.
Well, I don't know if I have that, though.
Well, we'll, we'll, I don't have it, we can't approve it, we'll have to jump over that if I can get it here yet, we'll.
Yeah, okay.
It's basically pay application number five. Terms of the water system planning, the only thing on the debate, uh, council, uh, and also Ryan on this, um, we did, I have had some conversations with the, uh, business there. To the north, that business is called, forgive me, one where you know.
Cedar Creek Sawmill.
Cedar Creek Sawmill, they have, uh, enlisted Mark Strong in engineering vision to design that water main along Pedro North. So basically they'll be designing it, installing it, we would basically review it and prove it, they get the permits. If you recall though, that property is right at, adjacent to our north water service boundary. That was established with our agreement with the city of Fort Wayne, I did talk to the city of Fort Wayne, and they got me an email confirmation that they're in favor of the town of Grable providing water service. That's the way the contract's written, in order for us to serve outside of our area, we've gotta get their approval.
Yeah.
So I guess upon council's approval of that, I'm gonna give a letter to, um, the property owner, and probably copy of IDIM, and just let them know, hey, we haven't approved anything final here yet, but the town of Grable, uh, is working with the property owner, uh, pending plan review, and submitting all the permits, that we have capacity to service that property, um, so. Is council in favor of that? Again, you're not approving anything, it's just a, 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 it's just a letter to the council, to the property owner, an IDIM, letting them know that you can service them, and then also letting IDIM know that they're in the process of getting on public water and vacating their, their, yeah, public water system. I think they're still working on the Pedro either, right? That's the city of Fort Wayne.
I think they're all done with that, aren't they, Fort Wayne's been out.
I know, a couple of weeks ago, they, they weren't done yet, but maybe they weren't.
Yeah, they, they had a
Card issue.
There's a card issue on their side, but to my knowledge, that's all been fixed, so. To my knowledge, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then on the twenty twenty six application, uh, if you recall, we submitted that in October. Expect to hear back on, in December, and then they actually have moved it from a four month deadline to a three month deadline. We've got the survey done on that, we'll probably have the preliminary design, but then we'll probably wait to see what the award is before we move too much farther than that. If you, I don't know if you recall, but the, uh, the amount of money the state's appropriated to the smaller communities is much less. We suspect it'll be much more competitive, so this is what happens this way. And that's all I have.
Ryan, you mentioned that is on the inside of all of the manholes?
Yeah, of the manholes, it's not the inside of the mains, the mains, similar to that, but it's not, it's not that, it's inside all the manholes, and they're orange now. Anything they sprayed is orange, and then the lift stations, from the bottom all the way up, is sprayed with that orange, it's a hard plastic in here.
Is that anticipated to last for?
Yeah, it's what, twenty year, thirty year?
Yeah, and it act, we've actually, I think, had a ten year warranty on it.
I believe, or five year. Fifteen, twenty years ago, you, what you saw was just kind of an epoxy on the concrete.
A spray, yeah.
Like a spray, but that's more of a structural, uh, type, there's, there's two or three different suppliers, that one's actually my favorite, but they, they do a really good job. Good investment, long term.
Yeah, yeah, uh, extends the life of the kind of structure.
Looks a little bit like that three M product that we used to spray on the inside of water tanks.
Right.
Like that fit.
Okay, thank you Casey.
You're welcome.
Got anything, Doris? Zach?
Uh, just a couple of updates, um, I, I wanted to make you aware, I, I think everyone was aware, but, um, the, the town is kind of under review by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, um, for, um, a uh, damage to underground, uh, pipe, and, um, in the area where there was some excavation being done. There was a hearing, um, conducted on this, uh, on November tenth, so earlier this week, two days ago. And w- we should have, um, a, a response or a determination from this advisory committee that met. Let me see, what they say, and what they'll do is they'll, they'll send us a, they'll send the town a letter. Uh, it doesn't say how long they have to send the letter, but once we receive the letter, so it's gonna be important to monitor this, we'll have thirty days from the day of the letter to request a hearing to contest any of the findings, um, to the extent the findings are adverse or there's a violation. Um, so we'll have kind of a, a short timeframe to respond, so just be on the lookout for that. Uh, I think, I think, um, responses were submitted to the I U R C ahead of that hearing on behalf of the town, so um, the details were provided, I don't have any indication or access as to how the hearing went, um, but we'll, we'll keep everyone updated on that. The other, the kind of the good news is, we did get a, uh, an order from IDIM denying, um, the challenge to the sewer permits, to the, denying the stay, uh, you'll recall, I'm gonna pull this up here so I can give you the details. We received an order, uh, early, uh, late October, uh, denying Mr. Cole's request to stop the town's permit. The judge indicated that Mr. Cole did not present adequate evidence on the four legal components, uh, to stop the effectiveness of the, uh, permit. And the town provided counter evidence that these components, uh, weighed in favor of the stay being denied, so as of right now, there's nothing further to do on, on that. So I'll, I'll pause there, if you have any questions on either of those updates.
Any questions on it?
Nope, nope, don't think so.
Okay. That's all I have, well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Um, just a few up, quick updates, um, Eric said that they got all the GFIs for the Christmas, the Christmas lights, all the extra stuff they put up. They, the gentleman went to on a Saturday and, and a Sunday evening, repaired all the lights, the GFI lights, I guess you'd say.
Yeah.
Uh, so those are all done, um, we talked about the light earlier, um, and then Pedro is back up to full force, as we discussed already. And then on the, I did send some more information to the I U R, uh, regulatory committee down there on what happened down there. It was all submitted already, uh, Zach advised me, I probably should send, send it again, make sure they have it, I posted updated information that they didn't have, and we really sent it in, so. What we hear back home, I'm not very sure what's gonna happen with that, the reason it is there is because we had a gas line, they, they probed the, probed the gas line, so. But it took at least any other ones, it's not a big worry, like the regular commission, but we had a gas line, so potentially it could have been very dangerous, you know, so.
Where was this at?
It was down by the gas station in the liquor store right there, it was during the trail project and all that stuff down there. They looked for the curb box and everything, and then put, and they probed through that gas line, so. Other than that, I don't think I have any other updates, I've been.
Running, running smooth.
The salt truck is out.
Yeah.
Even looked at, um, it's not, it's not the major thing if it's wrong, so that's the good thing, I guess, but, so they're gonna fix it, and we should have it back. Um, like a turbo wouldn't kick it in, so it had a fuel leak on between the turbo and something, and then they were working, they're making some other adjustments on some things and make it shipped easier.
On the transmission?
Yeah, the transmission, that was, they were questioning, but the transmission, they couldn't fix it, because really the part wasn't here anymore. Um, though, that wasn't the problem, so they're gonna, they're gonna look at it fixed, so. So hopefully we have it back before the next snowstorm gets here. Okay. Hopefully.
Okay. Stephanie, you have review?
For the November twelfth, twenty twenty five council meeting vouchers, I have totaling sixty one thousand, two hundred and seventy seven dollars and eighty eight cents. As well as the November, November seventh, twenty twenty five gross payroll totaling six thousand, thirty eight dollars and forty seven cents.
Christmas lights are ready to go up?
I was told they were going to all lights, so they should be fixing and replacing lights, so I'm assuming they're, they'll be ready to go up, so.
Good.
You got mine? You got mine?
You got yours?
Man, I looked through, I looked through the board. Four halves. Yeah.
You're right, I did. So I got to check them twice that way.
Yeah.
You're gonna tell us about Blue Heron Ministries?
Uh, they had just reached out and took their last invoice, asking or I guess addressing that they would be happy to help to enter into another, uh, contract for next year. Um, but we're just gonna have to update that along with, I'm sure, a few others, so.
That's who, that's all the burning, broader wetlands?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. See anything?
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Make a motion, we go ahead and pay the, uh, payables.
Those payroll and regular?
Yeah.
Okay. Second and carry. And you have down, discuss Blue Heron?
Yeah, that's what I just.
That's it.
So I'll reach out to them, have them draft something up.
Okay.
Um, and then speaking of plowing, Ryan, we're gonna have to get a new contract from Narwhal as well.
Okay.
So.
Can we do the meantime, they're good for the meantime? Hopefully don't get any snow for another four months, but.
We'll see.
I'll talk to you later. Okay. Any comments from the floor? Mark?
I do.
Yes, Joyce.
Uh, breakfast with Santa is on December sixth. And what I want to ask permission for is the people, um, that come in to bring the reindeer, Santa and the balloon, all request payment at time of their service. There's not a council meeting till December tenth. Can Stephanie have permission to write those checks out prior, so I can have them for that day to hand them their checks?
What's the dot remote?
Santa will be three hundred, the reindeers are nine fifty, and the balloon is three hundred. And I'd also like to get the money that I'm gonna put on my charge card for all the food and everything that we buy for over there, and not have to wait till Jan, January and have two months of interest. I have no idea what that's gonna run, but she'll have a veto receipt with everything that was purchased.
Do you know about what ran last year?
I don't know if we need tableclo- I don't know what it, I'll just wait till January for my money, I just want these three guys, I'll wait till January, 'cause I, I couldn't begin to tell you what it's gonna run. I don't know if I need tablecloths, how many more plates, napkins, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Everything.
I hate to see you get stuck though, but.
I'm not worried about it, I just want these three guys paid, because they want their payment upon service.
Zach, they can approve up to a certain dollar amount, correct? Pre-approve up to, not to exceed a dollar amount?
They, was that to me, Stephanie, I couldn't tell?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, yeah, they, they could, um, it sounded like she had definitive amounts for the others, you're talking about just for her fees?
Yes.
Yeah, they could do that.
Okay. Who are yours? Got an S?
I'll wait till January. I have no idea what it's gonna run. You know what I mean? I don't know, I haven't even looked at that part of it to even give you a ballpark.
Yeah, all we gotta do is prove what she needs fifteen, fifteen fifty? Whatever that comes out to. Is that right? Six, yeah, fifteen fifty.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we go ahead and go pay the fifteen fifty for, uh, Santa on the sixth.
The reindeer and the blue. Prove. Motion carried. Anything else?
Yes. Uh, I spoke to you guys about the incident on a rental on November first.
Yeah.
Glider. Uh, Kai and I went over and removed the wheels, and it has made it unstable, I guess is how I wanna say it. You know what I mean, you can shake the top now, so that's gonna get white, or yellow tape, caution tape all around it, and I'm giving it back to the people that gave it to us. So it'll be removed, I don't know when, but I'll put caution tape on it till that's done. Cause that's very, very heavy, and now the ground's so wet, I don't wanna tear up all that park.
Yeah.
So that will be gone, then two, the system that we have, I think that the parks got that in like two thousand and ten. It's outdated, we can't pull anything off of it. Brittany and Dustin came over, and we spent about three and a half hours over there trying to even pull it up.
It's outdated.
Yes, I would like to get a new system, I have a few people that I'm gonna meet with at the end of this week to give me pricing. Also, um, I had talked to Jeff about it, and I would like to stop using our personal computers and Brit, and, um, Brittany's work computer and have a laptop for the parks.
Right.
So that everything, emails, everything can get up our computers and onto a laptop, and something, I, I told you guys, I would like to be able to open the laptop and look and see what's going on at the park, so when there's noise over there at eleven, twelve o'clock at night, I can quit getting dressed and going over there.
Right.
And just look for myself from home.
Yeah.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yes, yes, that, that's way it was set up before.
Yes.
And, uh.
Sure do, yeah.
But that, it's been a long go, I don't even know how to get into it anymore, I had it so I could get on, on it too, you know.
It took us forever, and even when we had a problem, the last one, we really had to pull that off was twenty thirteen. And it, it was not easy. Trying, you know what I mean, it's, it's quite a mess. Trying, you know what I mean, it's, it's quite a mess.
Yeah, it, it should be updated.
And there's no hard drive, you know what I'm saying, it's
Yeah.
It's quite a sneaker work.
Yeah.
Good.
So, all right, I'll check into that and let you guys know.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
And you'll approve the laptop? For the system and
Get the whole.
Bring it to the meeting?
System, get the whole system.
Okay.
Yeah. What you need.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Any other comments?
Uh, no.
Here's the top.
Did you have anything else, Stephanie?
Nope.
Okay, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.